Rachel Gosell, I'm the Chair of Rent Guidelines Board, and I'd like to thank all of you for attending the first public hearing that we're having. So, and thank you everyone for coming out. I know everyone has jobs and families, and it's a lot of effort to come and communicate with us about the experiences that you're having, and we really appreciate it. This is the first of four public hearings we'll be having. To consider comments concerning the proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lots, hotels, and other housing units, subject to the rent stabilization law of 1969 and the emergency tax protection act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1st, 2014, through September 30th, 2015. So, as many of you know, and we do have copies of this, copies of this, available for anyone who wants to read through it completely, we have a summary of the proposed guidelines that were adopted on May 5th, 2014. So, I'll just briefly review them, because I do know that people here would like to comment on those proposed guidelines. Can everyone hear me in back? Okay, good to know. How's this? Excellent. Okay, so the proposed rent guidelines that were adopted for consideration, and these are the guidelines that we're inviting you to speak to us about tonight, include for one-year renewal leases commencing on or after October 1st, 2014, and on or before September 30th, 2015, a range between 0% and 3%. For two-year renewal leases commencing at same time, between 0.5% and 4.5%. There's a proposed sublet allowance between 0% and 10%, and then several others, or more specific guidelines, that again, we invite you to consider. We have copies for anyone who's interested. So, these are the, I think, the most significant of the proposed guidelines that we're here to hear your comments upon when you come and testify. Anyone who has pre-registered, we have, we have your names, and we have, you will be called in order. Anyone who has not registered but would like to speak, we do invite you to register, and you can do so right outside. And if you, oh, okay, yeah. If you are pre-registered, please make sure you've checked into the desk, and once you've checked in, again, you'll be called in the order in which you checked in. So, again, thank you all so much for being present. I'll now take the roll call of the board. Maggie Cruz, Harvey Epstein.
Present.
Stephen Flax.
Present.
Sheila Garcia.
Present.
Cecilia Costa.
Present.
David Wayne.
Present.
Sarah Williams Willard.
Present.
Rachel Gosell, obviously present. So, as I mentioned, this is the first of the four public hearings. The following three hearings will occur as follows. Monday, June 16th, 2014, that will also involve public testimony at the Immigrant Savings Bank Building, 4951 Chambers Street. That will take place between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, June 18th, at the Brooklyn Borough Hall, between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. And the final public hearing will be Thursday, June 19th, at Queens Borough Hall, between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. Directions to these can be found on our website, nycrgb.org, in the About section, and a meeting schedule, and you can also sign up to speak if you intend to speak in another borough by calling the Rent Guidelines Board offices at (212) 385-2934. And of course, copies of all of this are available to you. The final vote will take place on June 23rd, starting at 6:00 p.m. It will be held in the Great Hall at Cooper Union, 77th Street, at the corner of 3rd Avenue in Manhattan. Board members, please note that there are graphs of the hotel and apartment explanatory statements in your folders at the June 16th public hearing. We would like your comments on additions to the statements, knowing that the morning of June 23rd provides graphs to be then sent to you via email by Friday, June 20th. Obviously, if there are any questions, please see Andrew. Those are intended to reflect any additions resulting from these public hearings. Before we begin these hearings, I would like to read some of the rules and parameters for those who are testifying before the floor. Each speaker will have three minutes for your testimony. In the event that there are many more people to speak than we think we can fit in the allotted time, I do reserve the right to reduce the speaking time. I hope not to do so, obviously. You're here, we'd like to hear your full testimony. There is this clock, as you'll see, and that will beep once when you have 30 seconds left. So, at that point, if you begin, you can begin to wrap up your statements, that would be very helpful. As I mentioned, it's useful, it's necessary to confirm your presence, so that we do have something that looks like this, so we can invite you to testify. I will try and call several names in advance, and what we're hoping to have people do is when your name is called, if you can come down to the stage and be ready to testify, again, that will allow as many people to speak as efficiently as possible. If you have any material you'd like us to read, please provide the material to the staff who are sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. And finally, again, we very much want to hear everyone, we will, we will stay here as long as we need to, to make sure that we hear everyone here who wishes to testify, and we hope that you can respect each other, and that we can have a productive hearing where you can share all of your comments with us, and obviously, the reasons for you to be here. So, again, thank you for being here, and I will call the first three names. Can William Sanford, James Jones, and Jose Rodriguez?
Present.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Sanford, William Sanford, next will be James Jones, and finally, Mr. Rodriguez. Excellent.
Sir?
The name is Mr. X. Starting a public hearing at 5:00 p.m. is outrageous, less outrageous. Starting at 2:00 p.m. is more outrageous. Do you know what people do between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m.? They work, in order to survive. I guess you forgot that part. This public hearing was supposed to start at 5:00 p.m. You should have let us enter this order to him at 4:30. You decided we should enter at 4:45, which gives us less time to prepare ourselves. You have only one microphone, when you should have four. You should have two on this side, one back there, one there, and one back there. No, you only have one. So, you're forcing me to come, tramp down these stairs to this microphone. You're forcing me to break it down, give it a second, and generate your ass, because you have no common sense. Are you serious? If you choose the whole public hearing here, you should have four microphones, not one. I don't find that a reason, that, that, that disturbing, and it's tasteless, you know, if I, what have, what have we started? How are people, well, some of the speakers, who have qualified, those that are signed to waters and cans, who use all the things, supposed to come down here and testify? Do you tend to bring a microphone to them? If they're using a can of water, they can't walk down these stairs?
Sir, I very much appreciate your concerns, and we are doing our best to make sure that we can be.
Rachel, Rachel, do me a favor, don't interrupt me while I'm speaking. I didn't talk to you, you didn't speak in. Don't interrupt me while I'm speaking. Now, I'll ask you a question, I ask you a straight question, I ask you a straight answer. How are those, what, what, these cans of water supposed to come down here and testify? Like a family, you're not listening, you're not listening, Rachel. You're not listening. You know, you know who you sound, you sound like right now? You sound like my divorcee, remember, to my parents. You're not listening.
Sir, would you like to answer your question about how people who think we have a wireless mic, because I agree with you, that's crucially important?
Okay. That's, we should, as I said, you should have four microphones, one here, one there, two on the back, one inside. Consider doing that if your whole public hearing is in the future, because everyone can't walk up and down these stairs like me, okay? That's what you fail to realize. I can do it, that's what everyone else can't. Now, now, disabilities are visible. I guess you forgot that part, too. Do me a favor, Rachel, learn from your mistakes, repent from your mistakes, before you show up your mouth.
Mr. Jones? And just so everyone knows, for anyone who can't come downstairs, we do have a wireless mic, and we certainly will make that available.
Commissioner of Finance, New York, open load your page one. Action 32. At this point, you no longer own the property. False affidavit. Dear Mr. Jones, I wish to, I write to confirm our conversation today, New York City Administrative Code, at section 11405C, parenthesis C, the letter C, parenthesis 5, provide that those who apply for in-rem installment agreements on residential property must apply an affidavit stating that each tenant, as the parcel, has been so notified. That section, however, ends by stating, "Any false statement in such affidavit shall not be ground to cancel the agreement or affect its validity in any way." Thus, the Department of Finance may not cancel the agreement even if the affidavit falsely states that the tenants were notified that an in-rem installment agreement was to be applied for. False swearing and/or filing false documents may be a criminal offense. To pursue this matter, you might come to so, come to contact a district attorney, or perhaps the city department, investigation, truly your corporate accountants. Footnotes. Gary Parton, is now servant on the bench in Brooklyn, New York, Allen Co., footnotes. Mr. Jones, but it is a criminal offense. This is the sentence of the last paragraph. An applicant owes while tenants unaware, quickly give it to me secretly, let us go back into the closet. You give it to me secretly, no one needs to see you give me the money. The successors, the successors in the Law Department indicate that the false affidavit summary is their response to the applicants, "Give me the money." At one point, the Mayor's Board on New York City Police directed Jones back to the Law Department, 100 Church, for further clarification on their summary. Jones was met by his second office, Rita Dumeans. Rita Dumeans indicated their first officer did not error or make a mistake in the summary.
Thank you, sir.
Give me the money.
Mr. Rodriguez, and as Mr. Rodriguez comes forward.
Yes.
I'd like to invite Jacqueline Linditkamp and Silvia Franco also to come down to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jose Rodriguez. I've come to point you, problem. My name is Jose Rodriguez. I live in a 911 room, right in the Bronx. I am a little banana carry resident house. This is a nonprofit community development corporation located in the South Bronx, who support our residents in collective need. I live, I live in this for 17 years. Also, I lived in this neighborhood for 45 years. For the first time, I am afraid of losing my apartment, because I am retired, and 75% of my income go to rent. This, now, is only my case. Also, much, much people have my trouble. I can have my rent increase, and I don't want to be in a church or in the street. I am 67 years old, and this is reason I am asking for rent freeze or give you a service.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jacqueline, and I reside in the Bronx. My name is Jacqueline, and I reside in the Bronx. I, I am a former caseworker, and I'm advocating on behalf of my family and all tenants in the Bronx. After working in foster care for so many years, I became ill with chronic illness. I did not plan on getting sick, but now I am one of many tenants in this city that reside in rent stabilized area. If the Rent Guidelines Board continues to allow landlords to raise our rents yearly, eventually, I and many of the tenants will not be able to afford an apartment in the Bronx. For this reason, I'm asking the Board to postpone raising rent rates this year and/or cap the amount landlords can charge for a period of time. Also propose rollbacks on rent, negative 6% to 0 for one-year leases, and negative 2% to 0 for two-year leases. So, tenants can have time to bounce, bounce back from this economic recession, obtain employment, and/or gain resources to keep their homes. The present economy is putting the squeeze on all New Yorkers. However, people with limited incomes are feeling the most, with over 50% of our income going to rent, leaving middle left for food, life, transportation, clothing, medical insurance, and other essential expenses. In contrast, our incomes and benefits are being reduced and/or are rising at a slower rate, and not enough to cover our cost of living expenses. Additionally, rent increases are too frequent and for too much money per increase. At this rate, many people will have to leave their homes in the Bronx and relocate. It is by the grace of God that none of you are experiencing similar hardships that we face every single day. We're not looking for our hands out, we're looking for our hands up. So, if we can continue to live out our lives with dignity and grace. It's time to put the stable back in rent stabilized area for the Rent Guidelines Board to work on behalf of tenants. We simply cannot afford another increase. It is my hope that the Rent Guidelines Board will choose to make a difference in the lives of so many tenants in New York City by placing yourselves in our shoes. We made this all through court decisions on June 23rd, 2014. And lastly, I believe there's a scripture that comes to mind for such a occasion as this. It says in Proverbs 327, "Do not withhold good from those to whom it is due, nor to your power to act." Thank you.
The sentiments of this community right here, dead of it. I understand that. My name is Mr. Jones. I'm a resident of my home for almost 50 years. I'm a resident of my home for over 47 years. I've seen my children, I raised my children there, my mom raised us, and now I have grandchildren. I've become the president of the tenants association. The person who speaks up and speaks forward for us is one person. There are 321 of you in Jersey. Mostly, it's rent stabilization. We came out of rent stabilization a few years ago from New York City. But in these last seven years, you've gotten rent fees every year. I have elderly tenants in my building that, until a week ago, did not qualify for street and bridge because $2 over income, they can't afford to live. I also sit on the board and watch new developments that are coming into our neighborhoods that are listed as affordable housing, that are not affordable under rent stabilization or any guidelines that mean can afford to live. Nothing is brought into our community that are based upon the median income of the people who live within the community. In my building alone, we have changed from a residential, private building into a scattered site, where partners are being empty daily. You don't know who your next neighbor is. The landlords are bringing them in, they're bringing them out, they're bringing programs in without any notification. So, they're getting their money. They're getting their money, hope or crock, they're making sure that happens. They're making sure that they're getting commercial space within these residences. They're coming in, and they're just putting commercial spaces in to get their money. Where the people who live here cannot afford to live, so they'll leave, they leave constantly. We have grandparents that are now taking their grandchildren, because their children can't afford to move out into anything within our own community. I live in the 79th Assembly District, the 16th Congressional District, which is considered the poorest congressional district in the United States. How can they continue to come in without our income rising? You can tell us every year our rent must be increased, but we're not getting any increase right now. It's not that our neighborhoods are being bought up, it's not that our particular buildings are being bought up, and lifted up, everything else around us is getting a paint job and a spruce up, but we can't go there. We can only stay where we are, because that's what we can afford as low income people. So, I appeal to you, considering your decision, that you have the right to say that you will not continue to depress the people of this neighborhood, especially the South Bronx and the Upper Bronx area. Please, please do that for us, so that we can continue and continue to live and dignity people in a high spirit.
Franco, and can I also invite Oliver Kapal and Lucille Robinson to come forward?
Well, my name is Solida Franco. I've been living in this apartment with my mother and my 10 brothers and sisters since 1972. I'm 52 right now, so that's 42 years still in the apartment. Generations, my brothers and sisters, I've left, I have family in Los, I'm very close to my mother. My children are living there, my grandchildren are living there. I came here to ask you guys to please put a rent freeze. We can't continue living the way we are. In this building, I have seen these landlords get rid of tenants for any privileged charges or whatever. They harassing people. They're doing a lot of things. They're getting money out of MCI's, they're getting money out of a lot of places, okay? Recently, we got a fire, because they're using people that don't have no permit or nothing. My apartment in August 2010 got a fire, because he beat the wiring in the building out of my, where was I for a couple of months, living in the, out in a shelter, and then I couldn't live there to have my mother, an 82-year-old lady with drugs and all that stuff. So, I had to go live in a hotel, a Fort Row, for all those months, and then the landlord didn't do nothing. Nobody does empty apartment in our building, and he couldn't let us stay, okay? There's a lot of people, when I came back, they're using cheap materials for all these people. My apartment is falling apart, you know, and it's terrible that these landlords are getting away with murder, they're getting away with whatever. And I think it's time for us to have a rent freeze. I can't, when I lived there in 1972, I used to pay $2.79. My rent is up to $1,200, and he wants to throw me out. Why? Because the way we're living in this apartment. He told me, he told my mother straight forward, that he's going to give her $10,000 to the apartment, okay? He has got a lot of people out in the building, just giving money on the table, okay? If they have enough money to be doing that, I think it's time for us to freeze the rent with your guys' help. I've been seeing all these people out in the street crying, in, in, in housing court, and all this other problems that's going on, okay? These landlords do not deserve to have their rent go up anymore. We deserve it, it's about time. I keep seeing all these people sleeping in the street. Why do they can't afford anymore to live in this apartment? And the rent are being raised so much, once you leave, the rent goes up 60, or 70, or 80%. They don't deserve to get all this money, this is ridiculous. They say they spent so much money in the apartment, I have lived in the apartment. I'm one of the tenants association. In my building, I am one of the ones in charge, and I have been weighing fixes and everything, and I don't cheat what he does. A little painting, a little paint on the floor, it's time for us, these people in this community, all of them deserve a rent freeze. We need the help from you guys right now. We really need the help. We deserved it this year, and I think we, it's time for this, for all, everybody in the parks, all of the parks. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. Let me start out and say that I have been an elected representative of the people of the North Bronx for many years. I was in the Assembly for 23 years, and in the City Council for 12 years. I also served for one year as Attorney General. And I've always tried to represent the interests of tenants. They're a threatening group, and they need representation, and I am delighted that you have been appointed by the new mayor, or many of you appointed, because I think for many years, we've had a rent guidelines board that has leaned too far in favor of owners and landlords. And it's time to hire, it's time, it's time to have equity. And I know, based on what I've read about your backgrounds, and your philosophy, and your experience, that you will treat tenants more fairly than they've been treated. Now, I don't say that a landlord should never again increase, but the increases that they've received over the last number of years have in fact been excessive, given the fact that inflation has been very low. And the current, the current situation, where people have been paying a 7.75% increase for the last year on two-year leases, demands that we reverse course, not forever, but for now. We know that the mayor was elected because he pointed out that we have, in part, because he pointed out that we have an affordability crisis in New York. We've got to say to the citizens of New York that we recognize the difficulty that many of them have faced. And if you enact a freeze on rents for the next two years, that will be a signal that the government of the city of which you are a part is responsive to their needs. Again, I say, you can't say never an increase, but we've had an inflation rate of less than 2% a year, and we've had increases in rent that are far in excess of the rate of inflation. We also have a situation where people's incomes have not increased. Not only people in the public sector, but people in the private sector have not increased their income. The government, you're part of the government in your capacity, in your responsibilities, and the government has got to respond to these needs. Yes, we need to have enough money to maintain the housing stock, but we also have to measure that against the burden on tenants, and we have to recognize that owners now with vacancy decontrol and MCI increases have the opportunity to increase their income outside of increases in the, in the rent stabilized rent. So, the call for a freeze now, I think, will be a wonderful signal to the tenants of New York that the government of their city cares, and we can afford to do it now in a time of record-low inflation. Maybe it's sometime in the future we can't do it, maybe it's sometime in the past we could do it, but now is the time for rent freeze for the next two years, and I earnestly appeal to you, to do that, it will be universally, I think, at least for the tenants, universally applauded, and it does not mean that any landlord will in any way be put out of business, given the increase that they've received today. Thank you, and I hope you do.
Ms. Robinson?
I can get down those stairs.
Would you like to back up?
But I think I can hear me.
I can hear you. Can everyone, can anyone hear us? I think the person who's transcribing, because obviously, we want record of your testimony, would like to make sure he can hear the testimony, so we'll bring you a mic, okay?
Can I ask a question?
Sure. The mic is coming to you.
The issue of record homelessness in our city is something that we should be really mindful of, and I appreciate you raising that. And our goal here is to look at all the facts, all the information, and what's best for our city and best for our tenants and the landlords, and make a decision. And that's a crucial factor that we should be considering, so thank you.
And then Susan Bailey, and then Reynolds Bellmore, and Alva Molefick. Asa, you have a baby, would you like a microphone?
Sure, yes.
Are you okay?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey, Mr. Bellmore, I hope you appreciate that we'd like the woman to go first.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you so much for, you know, being able to, um, the public opportunity to speak. I'm speaking about myself, my daughter, right here. Um, my pregnancy, I was in the court, housing court twice, because I was about to be a victim for my marriage. I couldn't be my marriage because I was unemployed, because I was pregnant, they don't want to employ one of us anyway. And right now, I, yes, sir, was my last time on the courthouse because I had to go again with my daughter. And for me to pay off the debt, to be able to be a rent, I had to have two jobs. So somebody else is losing my baby. And that's to me, this is my first baby, and that's to me, you know, it's really painful because I want to be for her, you know, I want to give her the best that I can. And above me saying, oh my God, I give her the best of me. So, you know, I really, thank you, baby. So, you know, it's really emotional to me because a house is your foundation, a shelter is your foundation. When you're being taught your values, when you're being, I'm teaching her sign language right now, you know, it's when you're being taught how to love, you know, how to be absolute human being. And without shelter, it's, you know, it's, that's, like I said, the basic foundation. Right now, working with little kids in the South Bronx, and it's eight of them, half of them, they live in a shelter. One of them has been in a shelter since she was two years old, and now she's six. She doesn't know what is to have her own family. She doesn't know what is that like. And to me, now working with kids and constantly experiencing that I was almost a victim, you know, it's a truly important issue right now. I discovered this about this through my second job. So I'm very pleased to have all those organizations, you know, advocating for tenants and for people who really need it. So thank you so much for being on there. Oh, I'm reading the rent freeze now.
Thank you for being here and presenting an amazing example of citizenship for your daughter.
Thank you.
Asa Bailey?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Luke White Bailey, and I live in the Lafayette Pointe House. I was in Lafayette Pointe Houses in April of 1972, that's 41 years ago. It's a lovely place to live. I'm still in the same apartment after all of those times, and it's a lovely area. I have worked for 50 years, I'm 68, I've been, I've worked from the time I was 17 up until the time I turned 68, and I'm still trucking. My problem is, is that I do not want to be priced out, and I don't want my neighbors and friends to be priced out of affordable housing. Where are we going to go? We do not want to roam the streets, we do not want to be homeless, and the fees that we have to pay to live where we are, when the neighborhood is changing now for the better, we get the feeling that we're being pushed out of our area for some reason. People that make more money than we do, because a lot of us are on fixed incomes, people that make more money than we do will move into our area now that it's being fixed up with the parks and the streets and the sewers and all of that stuff. Give us a break. We do not need a rent increase. We cannot afford a rent increase. We have to maintain our style of living, such as it is right now, and we would appreciate it if you would not increase the rent, or if you have to increase the, give a rent increase, make it the minimum amount. We are, well, we were the future, now we're the present, and we need a break. We've worked all of our lives, and there's no place for us to go. Thank you.
Ms. Bellmore, and then Mary Silva, and Kishana Powell.
Good evening, everybody. I just moved in in November. I live in Lafayette Pointe, 17 years. I'm also an ex United States Marine. I worked for the city for 31 years.
Thank you for your service, sir.
I worked for the city for 31 years under the Bloomberg administration. I haven't had a raise and a five. And there's others like me, many others. What I'm trying to say, given the high inequality in America, which we know, people are paying 50 to 70% of their salary in rent, it's just ridiculous. We paid 50 to 60, 40 years ago. I said to the rent board, understand, we're supposed to live, work smart, we're supposed to live and share this plan, all of us, all of us inside. When you hurt working people, you hurt the families. We want to be in share, just like everybody here. So I ask for the opportunity for people to live decently and in a nice place and have a fair share in America. Thank you.
So we very much apologize for the time to get the microphone. We'll try and figure out a system where we can keep the microphone back there. And meantime, Ms. Silva, do you have a microphone there?
Yes, I do have. Good evening, everyone, and I'm so glad that I'm here tonight. I am a member of CASA, and I can see what's going on around for a long time. I've lived in the same place for 49 years, but let's go to the important things, and I'm glad that you all of you down there see and listen what I'm going to say. As long as you live in the neighborhood for 49 years, you won't be having to be blind to not see what's going on around. I mean, the Bronx is super, super full, a lot of people in there, and most of the people, most of them, they're suffering because the landlords has made them, these people suffering because of the rates and the rent all the time. So you gotta consider, even Sol, they don't have the same problem themselves. It looks like doing proud, and I'm very proud that I'm working as a member to CASA program, as a volunteer program, and I'm glad I'm doing this, you know? I feel really bad for the other people who has this serious problem, and I'm counting on all of you, because I figured since you're sitting in there, and you are trying to do something for the community in here and all New York also, that this time, something will be done for real, not a joke, they have to be serious, you people have to work hard and try to find the way. The way, just like it's in a war, one is for the enemy, the other one is for the other, but you gotta find the right one in order to fight and win the fight, because we are here to do this, not here to look at bully faces. No, 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 no. That's not the way it is. We gotta work. We count on you and your work and your determination and everything that you do, and I really want to be one proud, and I die because I want to be 80 years old soon, and I'm here talking to you. I'm proud that I'm doing this, because the people need respect and help. And I'm going to be more proud when I hear that something was done by you people up there, because you make a effort, you really, you really put a big price in all the poor communities who are suffering because of this. You know what I mean? We have 139 shelters for the people, you guys sleeping at the floor, this is not right. You can see sometimes all the the mugs in the street, people sleeping there, when we have 180,000 apartments in New York for housing without fixing it, and they could be used for people to live in there, this is really special. I really appreciate that you're here, and I hope we have something good, very special, something positive this time. Please, people, have blessed the Lord, and I just want all the people in this room in here also to pray for the Lord and see if we can have a good news very soon. We need it. Thank you very much. And then, the rent helped me free, and I also, I'm going to tell for the gentleman down there, also their fathers, and I hope that you have a very beautiful and blessing Father Day, this something is happening. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
We can hear Kishana Powell, and then Camilla P. Price will need a wireless microphone, so we can keep the wireless microphone near where she is. Ms. Powell?
Hi, I'm giving thanks to all of you, and thank you for the setting for us to, you know, give our testimony. I'm speaking on behalf of Lafayette State, and also my dad, Louisville Powell. I am going to be 35 this year tonight. My dad just turned 73. I've been in Lafayette State since 82, okay? My mom passed in 2010. My dad and I moved to the next building, and from since we moved to the next building, there's been nothing but, you know, up and down changes and everything. The rent, the landlord, actually, me and my dad, I really didn't start getting involved in this until my father, you know, he's senior, he's retired, and, you know, I'm just starting to get involved, it was just him alone, so I have to fend it for my father, and I'm going to do that until they die. We went into the landlord's office and to speak to him about this, you know, rent and our lease, we have got our lease back, or he thinks, my dad, you know?
Ben, it's me, your sir.
We moved from a two-bedroom. We moved, we downgraded, we downgraded, so we helped the landlord actually, you understand? So we got two bedrooms now, and they're profiting, they're profiting from our, you know, downgrade, and he's giving us nothing but trouble. We was actually in the office, and he kicked us out of the office. He threw us out, yeah, you know, it's like. So he, he threw us out of the office, the reason why was because we had an issue with the security, okay? He had this thing with, he had this thing with legal rent and what my dad pays, okay? Now, I'm, he keeps talking about legal rent legal with, like, my dad been here since 82, and I think, I got offended because he said that we're getting away with murder. I don't think so. I think he's getting away with murder, because he, you know, is profiting, like I said, you understand? So it's just, you know, these people, they're seniors, they're seniors, like I said, I've been there since 82, and I see all these people here, and walk with them, and they don't deserve this, they don't deserve this.
And we'd like to mention about the security, because in the, there's a building for this one, the three-bedroom, you gave security there, right? And now we're moving to this, this co-partners.
I mean, okay, I'm not the security.
Same, 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 same.
Development.
And they downgraded, right?
Right. So that's, the question is, if you could bring it to whoever about security. We pay, he paid, my mother and my dad paid security in 82, and they pay, he paid another security to move to the two-bedroom. So how does that work?
So we can't, we don't have the authority to ask and answer individual questions.
The Department of Housing Preservation Development may have some answers if there's something specific going on. There also are attorneys we may be able to speak to, and which we can answer your individual question, but we just don't have the authority.
Well, I'm not now, I'm saying whoever you can bring that question to.
Actually, we have, we have forms in the back, if you'd like to write down your part of concern, we absolutely will bring it back.
Rachel, if I can just add to that? Your security is yours. At the end of the lease term, you're supposed to get it back, knowing that you moved in the apartment. When you move to a new apartment, you know, they should, they should require to transfer the security, there are forms that.
Never buy, we had to pay a lot of security.
But there are forms upstairs, and you talk about filing complaints with the housing office called the Housing Community Renewal. You can file a complaint with them, or you can file a small claims case, but you have some real rights here, and I thank you for coming, and you should assert those rights and fill out on those forms, and really stand up for yourself like you're doing here too. So I really thank you for coming.
And if you do fill out, we will, we will bring it to the appropriate.
Thank you.
Sir, sir, I'm so sorry, but we do have other people we have to hear from.
All right, all right.
Okay, thank you. I think you should, you need a freeze. Thank you for telling.